What's up YouTube, welcome to another digging winning study session and this study sessions is absolutely packed. We've got 50 hands, we've got loads of different replays, so let's get right into it, let's not waste any time. And let's start it out here, this is a hand played by Nicky Svetkov on YouTube. He says should I raise turn to get value from worse A6 hands and flush us to something like 2K? So he's got ace jack here, we've seen open here from under the gun 30 big blinds and he calls in the cutoff. Two folds, flop is 996, he checks and he checks back with his ace high. See a bet here from North V when we turn an ace, definitely gonna call. He says should we raise the turn to get value from worse A6 and flush us, something like 2K? Um, I don't know if I would, I think I would just call and keep his bluffs in, like we're still gonna have smaller pairs and stuff. I guess raising could be an option, but I would probably prefer to do that with nine nicks. Like imagine what we're gonna do with our A6, first of all he's still gonna have ace queen and ace king, right as well. And also if a king or a queen comes on the turn or river, we're also only chopping. But another thing, if we're gonna start raising our A6, then we probably not gonna have enough bluffs either. Cause we also very often wanna bet our 108, our 78, 107, 10jack, those kind of hands on the flop small. So I wouldn't be raising it, I would just call and keep his bluffs in. So see another half pot bet here on the river, he says when I played hand, I thought he has a lot of suited aces, but also ace king, ace queen, the nine spades, he has a probably 98 suited, 109, ace 9, king 9. But I think almost all his 9s are gonna bet on the flop, in honesty, he's actually supposed to see bet on support quite a bit. He also can have 66, that's why I was only calling pre-flop, I think I would raise ace 6 because it was under the gun rates. And suited hands has more playability. It's not the big blind, it's under the gun, happy. Under the gun opens it up, cutoff calls, he calls. So we're playing here against under the gun rains. I guess raising would be an option, but I'm completely fine with just calling. And then here on the river, I think it's gonna be... Too thin to raise, like can we jam here? Is R enough, worse A6 gonna call, ace 10, ace 7, ace 8, those hands would have to call. Personally, I'm just calling and going from there, I don't know, are you guys finding a jam here? Like if you wanna know, then it's gotta equilab, you's gotta give him a range, okay? He's gonna call all his A6 and go from there, I just think that he's not gonna call all his A6. I think he's gonna call ace king, ace queen, ace 10 and then ace 7, ace 8, probably. I mean even that's maybe even white. But yeah, I think it's a little bit too optimistic to jam here for value, so I would just call. And indeed does, and he has sixes, interesting. I guess it's a fine check on the flop when you have a complete lock on hand. Also happy doesn't raise and Viktor doesn't raise, seems fair, I agree, I think we just wanna call, I think it's gonna be too thin. So another hand here from Nicky, he says I think one way to play his hand is four bet call pre-flop. Check it out, so we've got pocket jacks, we open it up in middle position. See a raise here from dude. And also two aces by the way, you say when I decide to check back flop, I would tend to raise turn. Always, I know you're not just talking chap, always like make for yourself clear, okay? Why, first of all, but also what hands are we targeting and also what bluffs could we possibly have? And I think we're gonna be having too weak of a range if we start raising our ace jack as well. Because he's still gonna have loads of A6, better A6. So here with the jacks... I thought we were dealing with the big blinds as well, okay, I see. Here with the, I mean even then, like if we were playing versus a big blind, even less I would raise here. If we were dealing here with the big blind guys on the turn, we wanna raise even less so. Because it's gonna be such an under bluff turn to lead on, if you're playing here against a big blind, we open it up, he calls. And goes check, check on the flop and he leads the turn? It's an ace, you know, that's really, really good for our range, right? We could probably see bet on his board like, you know, tons and tons and tons, small. So when we don't, we're very often gonna have some sort of showdown equity, he knows that. So when he's gonna lead here on the ace, it's actually gonna be way stronger. So I would prefer to raise here against under the gun raise than versus a big blind. Because a big blind is gonna be way stronger when he leads. Anyway, back over to the jacks. He says I think one way to play his hand is four bet call pre-flop. So we're playing 30 big blinds here, a little bit more, 35 big blinds. I personally am not having a four bet range here anymore, I'm actually jamming or calling the three bet. And here with the jacks, I would personally just go for the four bet jam and go from there, calling is completely fine too though. So we call, flop is 864, really good flop for our hand and we see a small bet here from the dude. Check raising here is certainly an option, denying equity against, you know, ace king, ace queens, king jacks, king tens. That kind of stuff. So raising is definitely an option. Would certainly be doing it with nines and tens and sevens, because it's just... Nines and tens because it needs a little bit more protection. Then with jacks, because we then also do not block king jack and, you know, jack 9, those kind of hands. But jacks, I think both raising and calling are gonna be fine, I think I prefer calling. He has no sets though, important to note. And I think people are not gonna go often enough on this board broke with like ace king, because we're gonna have quite some sets here. So he says the other way is to re-raise the flop so I can see where I am in the hand. I don't really like the reasoning, you know, raising to see where we are in the hand. Like I agree here that in a spot that if he jams, he's probably not gonna have enough bluffs. But like try to qualify, try to explain to yourself why you're raising. Very often to see where you're at in a hand is not the right reason, just look at, okay, what hands is he gonna go broke with? What hands do we get the, like what do we accomplish? That's a better question to ask than where am I in the hand? Because when you ask where am I in the hand and you jams, you're like, you know, you do not really get an answer. Where am I in hand, he jams, I don't know, am I not beat? We don't know, because we're not asking, does he have worse hands that he can jam for value? You see where I'm going chap? So it's important to ask yourself the right question, so you can give yourself the right answer. If you do not answer the right question, you will never get to the right answer. So he says I don't think he can have any sets on the flop, agreed, maybe 88, probably not. He can also have 87 suited, ace 5 suited, ace 7 suited, ace king, ace queen, ace jack, ace jack offsuit, 99, 1010. Nines to aces, seems a bit wide, I think it's gonna be more like jacks plus, maybe tens, some portion of the time. Overall, I think I played a hand really bad and I remember that, I was confused about it while I was playing, because it was his first three bet I've seen on this guy. Always important when you say that to, like when it's someone's first three bet to check the sample, because even if it's like a hundred hand sample, like may just be variants, it's important to keep that in mind. But I think calling is completely fine, five on the turn, I mean we're gonna have tons and tons of sets here, we're gonna have straights here. So let's see how this plays out, I wouldn't even mind to... Are we block betting this ever? It's kinda tough to get called by worse, like ace 5. Ace 8. And do you prevent it from bluffing from like ace queen and stuff? I guess block betting would work, I guess betting like 500 to 700, do you get called by like ace 8 suited? And ace 5 suited, it's probably gonna be fine, it's a 3, it's a 3 dollar buy-in, 330. People are probably not gonna start turning their ace queens and stuff often enough into bluff over a bet. So yeah, I think a block bet would be optional, now we see a half pot bet, I mean, we're gonna have so many sets here. Is this one of the better kings though, because we don't block, because we do block now king jack suitors? Can we still call this? I mean with how he already broke it down, we know that he's losing here, probably. Oh he did fold, yeah, I think, I think a fold is gonna be fine, because he's still gonna have a lot of sets. I guess we would have like... I don't think he's gonna bet tens either, but I think I quite like a block bet here. I do like the guy's three bet, I mean it's way too small, it's way too small somebody, I would just jam pre. I would just jam pre. Calling flop is fine, raising is optional too, I think you have a mix of both. And here the river, I would personally block bet. Especially in a 330, I would just go exploitative and have an easy fold. Almost no bluff, I mean he's still gonna have like queen 9, he's gonna have some, he's still gonna have loads of ace queen. Thing is just we're gonna have so many better hands that we can call with, so we're not getting exploited probably if we fold this. Plus with ace, plus we probably ready called tens where we don't block ace jack offsuit. Next hand, he says there are not a lot of bluffs there, so I just folded giving him the credit that he has from A6 hands, betting that big to get value from worse A6. Got ace 10, seen open, decides to just call, a little bit on the white side I think. See a pot bet here, almost, we've got ace 10. I mean I would, I would still, I would still, like I mean this is why I do not really like calling here, ace 10 offsuit. It's just a hand where we're not gonna win too many big pots with. Gets you in a lot of awkward positions, also doesn't play really well post, they come along as well, the blinds and the button. So I think if you wanna play it, I would probably just fold and ace jack offsuit three bet fold. I'm definitely more on the nitty side, but I think if you wanna play it and three bet folding, especially in the lower binds, it's a 550, it's probably gonna be better, because people are generally speaking over folding versus three bets, so I think it's gonna be better. Currently, I would still call once, because he can still have some worse A6s and he can have backdoor clubs and he can have diamonds. So I would still call once, oh you do. And we see a double barrel here on the turn. I mean the thing is, from a theory perspective, we can never fold here. And the reason why is just because we're still gonna have all smaller pairs. So if we start folding our A6s, he can basically go absolutely crazy. He knows that as well though, he knows that as well, he also knows we're still gonna have diamonds and we're gonna have to float backdoor clubs, like the king queen of clubs, queen jack of clubs, that kind of stuff. So yeah, from a theory perspective, we can never fold here. So yeah, I would also just personally just go broke here myself. Next hand, still from Nicky guys, he says 100 people left, I'm 67th. No pay jump, we are 71st, I'm 67th, no pay jump, when we are 71st, currently locked 11 dollars in bounties and 9 dollars locked up. 500 dollar plus for bounty, plus bounties for first, how should I play this hand, should I just jam 32 big plus pre or jam the turn? See you got pocket aces, see limp, 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 yeah jam, really easy jam here. Reason why is because we just deny so much equity and when we get called, we very often have really good equity, so. I would definitely be jamming here, even my suited broadways and all the suited aces, all that stuff, you just wanna jam here. Because you deny so much equity and you're gonna pick up so many chips. And yeah, I would not be three x-ing or I would not be raising, I would maybe just raise big with just my, with my really nutted hands, especially in the lower binds, I think that's a cool exploit. But yeah, you just print already so much money by just jamming. But yeah, you can definitely, definitely raise here, but then I would do it with like my aces and kings and queens, just because some people are sticky and just like to call and see a flop still when you squeeze. So just allow them to make more mistakes than when you shove. So I would do that with my, with my really nutted hands, but here with the aces, definitely wanna be jamming here. Amazing squeeze spot like somebody says indeed, as played, I would still be banning here, small in this flop. Reason why is because we're still denying a lot of equity against six outers, against the king queens and queen jack suitors, that kind of stuff. And he may still call with some worse hands, even some smaller pairs, so yeah, I would still be betting here. And now, we get into this awkward spot, he's queen jack. Betting the turn, but yeah, jam pre. Same tournament, I think we have 60 people left, I called the turn because I told, because I told he has a lot of king we suited. I think he meant fourth, a lot of king we suited like hearts and clubs, because I don't block this suit. Jack 8 suited. Seen open, we are definitely gonna defend, I'll play it, see better on the flop, I would just call. This was, this actually used to be a spot where I was jamming a lot and it would definitely be profitable by the way. But by just calling, we allowed them to bluff so, so much, so I started calling with one pair hands way more than jamming. Or just like in general, just calling way more. But jamming would be completely fine, now we jams and definitely be calling, because he's gonna have all his hearts, gonna have all his clubs, gonna have king, queen, queen 9, king 9, ace king, ace queen. So definitely calling here, plus all the, all the clubs and hearts. Definitely nice call, unlucky, pocket queens. Think I should bet the flop, more likely to check aces, kings here, but I had the queen with clubs and decided to check to have some over pairs in my checking range against this tough opponent. After he bet his one big blind, I decided to go for value and raise him, that seems fair. To open it up, we are really deep, this guy calls, okay? We're playing like 40, 50 big blinds. Better to jam flop and fill in bluffs have a lot of equity, that's fair enough, yeah. Yeah, king, queen, ace, king, ace, queen, you know, a lot of those hands have a lot of equity, I mean they're still gonna call though. But yeah, that's a good point, good rule of thumb. See check here, he decided to check back, it's completely fine here, it's actually a really good hand to balance with. That being said though, in a 750, I wouldn't really care about that and which is bet for value and call a raise, would just bet small. Also, although you can mix in some bigger bets as well. See a small bet here on the turn with indeed just raise here for value, you get called. And the river is four of diamonds, no flushes apparent and now he lead jams. What? It's on the final table, but SSR is resolved here, it was a pretty good regular, but SSC his plays... Think he was a bad rec, yeah. I don't know what this is. He had a 100% lead on the big blind versus aggressor on ace high rainbow balls, more without place. Uh, I mean there's so much ICM pressure on him here, that he can't just like... So what is, what are possible hands, right, what are possible hands, seven 4, 9 4 suited? Fours, fours wouldn't make a lot of sense here, a 3 being afraid to miss value? I think fours would make a shit ton of sense, like 4 of 3, something like that. Personally, I would just be folding, we're still gonna be in an amazing spot, it's such a bad sizing to bluff with. I think if he has a hand like 68 or, could have 65, that would make sense. Or 108, I think those hands, he would hold more often. Just give up or bet like two thirds, overbet slightly, I don't think we're gonna be seeing shoves here by too many bluffs, in honesty. Plus we also block here in this case, his, his clubs, what it's worth. It is a PKO, but yeah, I think, I think we're still gonna be in an amazing position if we fold here. It's just, it's just really tough to find too many nets for bluffs here, like is he gonna turn freaking 54 into a bluff? I don't think so, I think especially on final tables with ICM, people are more often going to be snuck than anything else. So I would just be folding here. Interesting hand, curious to hear what you guys think about this, would you guys be calling here? I would just be folding, exploit fold, yeah, I would fold here. Next hand, this is upswing guys, upswing replayers, a hand from Daniel, last hand was from Igor. Early position versus big blind, heads up, 50 to 60 SPR. See how this plays out. We've got pocket tens here. We open it up, under the gun 1, fold, fold. That's my hand, I'm Daniel, oh hey Daniel. And Daniel, wait, what's happening? So we opened it up with tens and we see a call from the big blind and we see a terrible flop. Flop, see bet the range on this board versus EP versus big blind. See betting our whole range, seems fair, we've got a bigger range of ventures. Fair enough, yep. Call, turn, great turn for our hand, turn 8, complete flushes, the card slightly better for big blind in early positions, since they can have way more flushes. True, I still have loads of hands that want to continue here, two pair plus and finally bluffs is super interesting. So we're gonna have ace king here, we're gonna continue for value, right, ace jack, probably king jack, we are still continuing, we're gonna have queen 10. We're gonna have flushes and we are gonna have sets. So we are still having a pretty big range of ventures, yes, he's gonna have flushes, but we have so many more pairs and sets than him, that I think we still wanna continue on this turn. At a fairly high frequency and tens here, I think it's a beautiful hand to turn into a bluff, blocking queen 10, blocking hearts. So what does Daniel say, he says still have loads of hands that want to continue here, blah, 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 blah. Reason is that we have a very tight range from early position, if I check back all my showdown value, then I'm barely way too infrequently. If we play a one sizing strategy on the turn, bet big or check, then neither I want to want bluffs. Bluffs to use, any straight or 10 9, 10 8, queen jack, jack 10, queen 9, tens, not queens, I think you can also use smaller pairs by the way. Oh, you'd say that, 5, 6, 7, 9 with a heart, yep. So yeah, I think, I think we would mainly be continuing big here. And I think our ace queens and ace tens, like a one pair hand, would just be opting to check. See what he does, indeed does go for the big sizing, I like it, do get called again, jack on the river is... Did he just, just, just main bet chap, did he just mainly? River, bad board jack, this card is better for us than villain, who should have followed most of his jack kicks by now, true. But our jack kicks bluffs improve and our sets in two pair improve the boats. Using a 75 to 100% sizing on the river, should mean I can continue with all my pairs with a heart and give up with everything without a heart. Yep, seems fair, I agree. Bump it, 9K? So he has to call 9K to win 20K. And we tie it in king X and weak A6. I'm not sure if it's big enough, I mean I guess it's fine. Definitely getting king X to fold. Would we, would we also raise in 9K with our value here, with our boats? Probably, because we are trying to get called by an ace and a king, so we cannot like go insanely big. So we also with our value, would probably take this sizing. And we just see this as a fairly, you know, sees as a check. Yeah, I like it, I think he played, I would have played it exactly the same way, nice hand. Nice hand, me liky. If you want to make it bigger, wouldn't it be a jam, yeah, yeah, yeah. Plus with our boats, like somebody says, we block ton of his calling rates, yep. Anyway, you're supposed to disagree with me and shit on me, I mean I would have played it the same way, maybe I'm not good enough. Not good enough to shit on you, I would have played it the same way. Okay, got a hint here from ace, it's in a 330 mixed max, he says open 99 under the gun, get called by the cutoff and the button. Lovely position to be in, so you open enough 3X, 50 big blinds, you call from the cutoff and the bet horn. Flop, deuce, 4, 5. Important to note here, cutoff and button, it's gonna have a different range, the first, for example, middle position. This is an interesting board, it's a board where we can normally against like middle position can see bet like 50%. Reason why is because with our ace highs, we have an immediate overcard versus smaller pairs and stuff, plus we have a gutter. That being said, this board is a little bit different versus cutoff and button. Reason why is because the cutoff and the button do have all sets here, whereas middle position doesn't. They do have deuces, they do have fours, they do have fives, they do have ace 3 suited, middle position doesn't have those hands. So this board really favors them, we also don't have deuces, fours and fives, right? We open like sixes plus, so they have way more sets, they have straights, yes, we have ace 3, but they do as well. So this actually, this board is way better for them, also because we have way more of that off-suited Broadway crap. We've got a king queen offsuit, we've got maybe even king jack offsuit, we've got ace jack offsuit, ace 10 offsuit, ace queen offsuit, ace king offsuit. Those are so many combinations that they just do not have. They've got the suited combinations, right, they've got a king queen suitors, a queen jack suitors, those are way less combinations. So we've got lots of trash in our range there for this board. And they have all the sets and straights. So this is actually a board where I wanna be checking here, 100% of my rents. 100%, I would check here, keep things easy. Because somebody says still have to see bet, you don't have to see bet, I mean a reason to see bet and see its reasoning is like, we're still gonna get six outers to fold, thing is hearts are still always gonna continue, spades are always gonna continue and yes, we are gonna get king, queen and clubs and stuff to fold. So I think if you wanna bet here, I would, I would bet small, because the cutoff cannot really float that wide, because there's still a button behind. And because also if you're gonna bet here, we're gonna be in so many tough spots on the turn, so many tough spots, what are we gonna do? Are we gonna continue on small pairs, where they literally pick up so many more sets with their smaller pairs as well? Are we gonna, we can't continue on hearts, we can't continue on high cards? So if you're gonna bet here, it's gonna get us in so many tough positions on the turn and the river as well. So I would just be checking here, multi-way, 100% of my rents, even against just a button, I would be checking tons and tons and tons. I think we wanna be checking like 80, 90, maybe even 100% of the time, just for simplification, that's what I would do. So now we bet half pot, if you wanna bet, I don't like the sizing guys, I think I would... I would just make it small, just try to get the six outers to fold, I wouldn't even make it big. Personally, what do you say, I think that's a tough flop to play on, but I'm see betting here too, one gets value from the pairs. Ace 5, ace 3, ace deuce, 6, 7, 8, to charge flush us and two get a bunch of six outers to fold, which I don't mind here. If we do, because we take down nice pot away, but I was in doubt it, expect a lot of flushes from both, even though I already look stronger. Yeah, and we're gonna be in so many tough positions here on the turn. Turns the king of hearts have to check, check flop, what do we do now then, do we just check call? We just check call, we're gonna have a bluff catcher in a way smaller pot, whereas if we bet and we see a call and a call, then what do we do on the kick, we're gonna check fold? Plus, is there always gonna be a king of hearts, is it always gonna go check, check, no, right? I would just be checking 100% of my rents, I would not think about if, 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 I would think about who, who, uh... Whose range favors this board, right? What are we trying to accomplish and go from there? And on this board, like I already explained, they have such a better, this board is so much better for them. So yeah, now we bet here, call and a call and now we just check and give up, well if this happens one more time, I'm... Yeah, I mean especially multi-way, I would certainly just check and give up, it's, it's gonna be, it's such a good turn for the range as well, the ace. Because they're still gonna, like if they're gonna float, it's gonna be quite some A6s with the gutters, A6 suited, it's all gonna float. I mean still gonna have all the A6s or hearts, yeah, we definitely give up here, plus they still have all those sets. He says two in both call me, and that's the worst turn for our extra hand, but it's a good one for our range. It also brings the second flush throw out there and in-game outside to bet into two people. But right now just want to check here, since they have a shitload of A6s as well. Flush us won't fold, they have sets and I can see some 3X as well in there. So I can never expect to take this down on the turn and should give up here instead. We get raised in the bottom call, so we of course, we have the white flag in game as well now. Yeah, I would, I would definitely just already give up here on the turn, I would personally already check the flop. And they've got fives and ace 3. That was nice too. I check everything, yes, for simplification. I would check 100%. One ten satellite early on, pre hijack, min opens and I flat queen 10 suited. We flat queen 10 suited, three betting is an option here, ace. I would prefer it, three bet folding here, raise to like 4.2K, 4.5K, something like that, that's what I would do. Really great hand to bluff with, block fairly big portion of their failure range, plus if he does call, we do have a lot of equity. Check, check, definitely wanna bet here, multi-way, we mainly wanna use a smaller sizing. Also it allows people, also because like we don't mind if they've called king, queen, queen jack, ace queen, because if they pick up a queen, we make two pairs, so I would be betting small here, also allows us to bet small with our sixes and sevens and stuff. Nice sizing, I like it. Turn is the seven of hearts, see a check, okay, let's see what he says. Hijack min opens, I flat queen 10 suited, I think both flating and three betting here is fine, I'm not sure what I prefer, but at first a min open, I'd rather want to three bet, to not give players behind a great pot odds, but I think... Plus I think queen 10 suited here plays better first plus I think queen ten suited here plays better versus three bets, I probably should be a bit more aggressive, yes. I just recommend, you've got the race scores, right, I just recommend to, to use those charts. You're not gonna do much better by yourself. Probably. No offense, by the way. I'm also just a bot and use those charts, because, you know. It's a tool, gotta use it, to your advantage. Small black calls as well, so we have three ways and both check now. All calls, so we go through, you know, worse ten X, fussers, nine X. Okay, turn, seven of hearts, not a great of a turn here, but I think I want to continue to charge worse ten X, nine X, and eight X ends, and one hard combos and queen jack, of course. Um... I think this turn, I mean, I guess we could bet big and then check back the river, cuz he's still gonna have loads of worse ten X to the ten X. But it is three ways, so he cannot defend as wide as he would be able to versus just a defend. It's also the small blind, so the small blind's gonna have way more defined range, it's not gonna have that many I thought we were playing as a big blind, against a small blind, I would definitely be checking here. And the reason why is because the small blind has a way stronger range here than the big blind, he's not gonna have that many worse suited ten X. Right? He's not gonna have ten six suited, ten five suited if he's open and a call. So he's gonna have ten seven, ten eight, ten nine, jack ten, queen ten, king ten, ace ten suited. He's gonna have queen, jack, king, queen, king, jack. Which we could choose for value, but he's gonna have hearts and club combination mainly of those, uh, as well, so hearts get there. Uh, can have nines, can have deuces, can have ten nine, can have ten seven, and can have nine, seven, could have eight, six suited, could have jack eight suited. All in all, like, we don't have three streets of failure here anymore on the turn. Um... So... I would personally be checking here and going from there, and continue betting our ace, ten, and king, ten. That's what I would do. Ink team at ten nine, and ten seven, and nine seven. So this is one of our weakened queen X, you know, the, uh, ten X, a ten eight suited, jack ten, queen ten, those hands I would be checking. Especially against the small blinds, because he's just not gonna have as many worse ten X, see a call, check, and now I would definitely check back. Yep. He has sixes. Did play out pretty nice this time, um, but yeah, personally, I would be checking back the queen ten on the turn. I think his hand is also really bad call here on the turn. Uh, because a heart is not always gonna be good for his hand, and then eight is not always gonna be good, so this hand should actually be a fold sixes. Um, okay, this is in the eleven dollar monster series. We have flops, model limbs, we check back ace for offsuit, and call a mi- min bet on that flop. Ace for offsuit, we play sixty big ones deep. I have a blind, see a limp, we indeed check. See a ten K bet, one third, definitely wanna be calling once, for ace highs. Turn, he continues pot. I mean... He's not I don't think he's gonna pot his deuce six. With quads. I think he's gonna bet small, keeps his hands wide, sometimes he, I mean, may even check with a fairly high frequency, trying to get us to bluff. I think we're gonna see that way more often than he's potting here. Um... I also don't think he's potting smaller pairs, I don't think people are limping the aces, kings, and queens often enough. See what Ace says, turn, do his hearts, makes us a job with a lot of ace six, and fillin decides to pot it here, which is worth. I don't think he's betting a lot of ace six on the flop, to be honest. If he does, he's probably not continuing on the turn. I have more deuce six and jack X as well as pairs, I think, since he's raising a big portion of his pairs pre, so that bet smells a lot to me like air still plus, trying to get me off a chop, all in all. I think I have three percent here on the call turns, well, I don't think we're gonna be chopping a lot. I think he's gonna have very often his complete random trash, more often than anything else. I do like the call. And what else is called it? Down. Over pot, river, fillin over bets massively, never looked into these pots, and I also wouldn't, cuz it's almost never gonna happen again. Also think they're very rare, yep, but even though this is a very red line, I don't think he's bluffing here, I could very well have jack X and deuce X and pairs, so I think we would call for a chop at best. I don't think we would be calling for a chop a lot, a lot, like I said, I don't think he's gonna have a lot of ace six. But it's just such a bad sizing to bluff with that, I would just call all our failure. Fold eighty S four. Also, like, if we start calling all our ace six, then what are we folding? Nothing, right, cuz we're not gonna float queen, uh, queen ten, or ten nine, or eight seven, or king, queen, on the flop or on the turn, right? Cuz there are no flusterers apparent or anything, so, yeah, good fold. The twenty KO series, we see two limbs, and we are cut off with jack, jack, so we've caused three bet here, and I don't mind making a three K here, and we also cover both. Pocket jacks, limp, limp, definitely wanna raise, six X, seems like a fine sizing to me. Uh, flop was a one-third bet from the small blind happy. And pre went check, check, limp, check. I think it's fine to be sticky there, I think it's gonna be massively overbluffed. Uh, see check here on the flop, limp, limp, raise, call, definitely wanna be betting here, um, it's gonna have lots of suited connectors though. I think nines and eights would be very often raising, instead of limping along. So yeah, I would definitely be betting here, you get a call. Turn is interesting, um, definitely denies us three streets of failure here. Uh, block ten jack though. Could have queen ten, could have queen jack still though. King, queen suited maybe, if he decides to limp that along as well. Can have ten, seven, seven, six, but also a lot of like king eights suited, and ace eight, ace nine, ace four, that kind of stuff. Five, six, and sevens, I wouldn't mind to bet big here, turn, and then check the river. Flop sizing bigger? Uh, you can make it bigger as an, uh, would be fine, yes. You, you can make it two thirds, because he's gonna, you know, his calling rate's gonna be pretty inelastic anyway. Plus, if he starts folding like skin queens or something, it's pretty nice. Like all those eight X, nine X, ten sevens, ten jacks, you know, queen jacks, jack tens, all those obvious hands that are gonna call, gonna call also a bigger sizing. Um, he checks hit the river. We block clubs, we block jack ten, I think we can still bet smaller to target, like ace four, five four suited, six four suited, and nine X. Indeed, we see a bet, seems fine. Here ten jack, this is unfortunate. Hey CV, how do you recommend playing ace queen suited, ace queen off the in-position or out-of-position? It's a little bit too general to say. You'll yet, it, it depends a lot on, on boards, what positions, um, like in-position, out-of-position are both pretty, um, you know? Generalized, right, like, whether we're playing, uh, under the gun versus the big blind is completely different than when we're playing button versus the big blind, our range is completely different, right? So... I wouldn't be generalizing, uh, that much, would really need to see hand examples to make, uh, to make it clear. Say under the gun raising, you have ace, queen suited. Also depends on position, but very often we would be calling. Ace, queen offsuit, we would prefer three betting, because it doesn't play as well post-flop. Um, king ten suited here, a hundred big blinds, gonna open it up, yep, see a massive three bet here from the small blind, four X. Uh, it's in a two twenty deep stack, opening king to suit on the button, get three, but the small one over four X, not loving it since he's been playing fourteen seven over one hundred and sixty hands, I would just be folding. I would just say, enjoy your aces there, take my money. Generally, I wouldn't even battle here. When he makes it pretty big, and he's tight. I would just be folding. And I, I wouldn't even think about it. Like, oh, I'm ex- you know, exploitable. Then you start adjusting once you start tributing way more, you know? If he's really tight, I don't, I don't mind just folding. Now it goes check, check on the flop, really good turn for us, definitely wanna start betting here. Seventy K, I would personally go big here, Ace. Because we have a bigger range of fantasy here, where we have all sets, we have straights, uh, and if he had the queen tens and stuff, uh, he would very often see bet the flop, same for seven, six, and his sets, other than jacks. Plus he's not, you know, nines would definitely bet the flop or here on the turn. I think in general, um, so I would definitely bet big and put max pressure on his ace, kings, and ace queens. Yep, we'll play it. He has hands, king ten, king ten of hearts, yeah, this replay kind of sucks. But king ten of hearts, we have. Those are hands from Mitchell. Yeah, Ken blocked it, uh. Happy. Um... The upstream replays is not as smooth as the run it up replay and stuff, it's just, looks way cleaner. But for party hands and stuff, it's probably the best. We're just waiting for party to release the, uh, you know, the new, uh, way to share hints. Uh, this hand is played on the final table of the four forty bounty builder on Pokasaurus. There are four people left, and I'm currently in second place with an even stack as player's number one. I open ace two suited from the cutoff, the big blind, weak player, min three bets, his three bets set is four, also very often, uh, simple size. See how this play, plays out. So we open it up here, seems completely fine. Right, this guy's twenty big blinds, twenty five. Yeah, almost thirty five. Open it up, definitely fine. You have three bets, um, in all honesty, I wouldn't mind to just fold here. Especially from the big blind, people are just not three betting. Anywhere near close enough, I think, unless, like, it really depends on table dynamics, like, if you have been opening a lot of hands and he has been active, then sure, I would call, because also the sizing is really small, but if that's not the case, I would just be folding, so the re- I would really make it dependent on um... Yeah, on the dynamic. But it's, it, it's really small, so, as a default, we'd just be calling here. Yeah, we get it, like, such a good price, even against his, you know, against a really good hands. I agree. I looked at the sizing, uh, later. Good, you guys called it that. Flop is pretty decent, flop back to, uh, fluster and bottom pair. He bets here really big, I mean, we are gonna have deuces, we are gonna have nines, we are gonna have fours, but we also gonna have loads of suited broadways and stuff, so I think I would be calling here the ace deuce. Also because if he pick up an ace, we're very often gonna beat his ace, kings, and ace queens, so you know, also block his outs, um... So now you would fold, you would call, you would call pre, but you would fold here. Would just exploit fold, it's always nutted. Oh. It would definitely be an exploit fold, I mean... I don't think he has a three bet bluffing range from the big blind at all, but because the three bet is small, I have to call here. On the flop, I make bottom pair, fillin see bets two thirds, opted to call, cuz I picked up some more active as the back of fluster and a pair. The question is, does fillin, weak fillin, with a low three bet frequency and a not three bet bluffing range, bet two thirds pot? With anything less than an overbear or, or the not fluster. He kinda already sums it up, probably not, so... Yeah, I gue- I guess it's, I guess it's good to, to, to fold. As an exploit. Yeah, it's gonna be, uh, one point four, one point two. Yeah, it's gonna be, uh, like two thirds pot on the turn left. Yeah, I think it's probably good to fold here, actually. First of all, bec- and that's actually the same reason I would fold pre, but I guess, you guys make good points, it's like so small that we probably just have the right equity, and then here, I would probably make an exploit fold, like people say in chat. Now as a player, I would, I would, I would just be checking here. Because we, we, we are heading as ace, king, ace, queen, so, you know, we also block the outs. I don't think we really need to deny equity. He's got queens. Yeah, I think an exploit fold on the flo- on the flop is good. And I think I do agree, if you guys, we just gotta call. Pre-flop because he made it so small. But I would check turn. And then we can just fold if we, if we break on the river. Because he's just almost never gonna have bluffs, and if he's gonna bluff a shit ton, we're still gonna have sets and stuff to call. King seven here, this is... Uh, by the way, with the seven of clubs, what he said was he really liked the card, the seven. Uh, fillin opted to check, he has less than the puzzle's bet left, and I think he should jam all his overpass on this draw, have he bought, true. Uh, choose to jam to put a lot of ICM pressure on the short stack, what I really don't like, looking back to this, with the read pre-flop and bets on the flop, I think I should have checked and realized my equity, and fold to a non-ace, or deuce, or club river. Yep. I mean, he already nailed it down himself. Completely agree. King seven here. Also on the final table of a four forty bounty builder. There are eight people left, and I'm currently in seventh place, under the gun opens, and middle position chip leader calls. Under gun player seems a solid micro six player, and middle position seem like a better recreational with a high fee pip. And pre-flop, raise gap forty-three to fourteen. On small sample size, I choose the famous king seven suited in big blind, let's see how this plays out. Also, if you, if you guys have hands, like, I know this is the bounty builder, so on Pokasaurus, please next time, upload it on the run it up replay. It's gonna be way smoother, and it's gonna look way better on stream as well. Um, see the king seven suited, he opened in a call, would definitely be calling two. Check. See a bet here, would be opting to just call here, uh, he could, I mean... Uh, he should have a fairly strong range, but you know, we still have the right price here, if he has like eights and stuff, and it's five, still gonna have ace four, ace six, probably, in a low stakes tournament. Um... I would probably still call one time. We squeeze on the bottom with king seven? No, king seven is certainly not a good hand we wanna be squeezing with, if we are on the bottom. Because we just only block some failure, we, and if we do get called, it doesn't play that great, like, that great post, right? We cannot really make too many straights and all that kind of stuff, it's gonna be way too weak. We would use hands like king, jack, king, queen. Yeah, I would not be check jamming, I think we're gonna be check jamming, we're really gonna isolate ourselves against better hands. And also, like I said, like, it, it's bad on the flop, it's gonna be fairly strong, it's gonna be has like ten, nine, nine, eight, that kind of stuff, and with the ICM, we probably do not wanna run it, we just wanna call, try to keep the pot small and go from there. Um... Three way to the flop, I check my whole range here, as I see mercy dunk betting this flop, I wouldn't be dunk betting, to be honest, multi-way, we'll just keep things easy and just check. You do have not advantage, you've got two pairs, I mean, they've got, this guy probably has sets too, and this guy has all the overpass, and you don't have any overpass, um... Uh, all the two pairs and maybe even all the sets, cuz I don't know if I would jam this pre-flop, I think you are gonna have sets. I check and under gun, check also, expecting to play straightforward in spot, and bet all those overpass and sets. Middle position choose a better one-third pot, my hands needs a lot of protection, so I choose to jam, the question I ask myself is with how much air is he betting into three people, and how much fold equity do we have? I don't think we are gonna have enough fold equity to, to jam here, I think people with nine, eight, and ten, nine, that kind of stuff are still gonna call. And we don't really want that with the ICM, so I would just call and go from there. Also, ace seven, he's gonna have, and ace six, ace four, all that kind of stuff is folding. Probably. Yeah, we are mainly gonna get called, but better. I would just call and try to control the pot a little bit. He's got five, so it's just... Definitely not a call. Cuz you're gonna have hands like six, five, and seven, five, and you know, we're just not gonna be doing good against, you're gonna have hands like seven, four, six, four, seven, six. Um, you're gonna have straights. Um, yeah, it's a complete punt by him. I would just be calling the flop. What final table is this? A four forty bounty builder. Pocket sixes. Uh, final three tables, a four forty bounty builder, we are seven-handed at the moment, I min open six, six, under the gun two, twenty-three big blinds, this is a hand I would just be folding. Think of the stack size, because as the stack size, especially with bounties, you will be seeing a lot of jams on. Um, I would probably open sevens plus. If you open though, you're probably gonna have to call, by the way. Although in a four forty, people not jamming enough, but probably is a fault. King four deuce flop. Uh, fillin seemed like a passive recreational player, his three bet set was only three of on one hundred hands, hands. On the flop, I choose to bet one-third pot sizing for protection, to fold out all ace, ace, queen, ace, jack, without a club, and it's queen, jack of diamonds, et cetera, yes. I do like that. Do get called, we're gonna see mainly bigger pairs, you mean, sevens, eights, and stuff, if he decides not to jam that somehow, king X. Club draws, so this turn is gonna be pretty bad, he's not gonna have that many offsuit combinations, but he's gonna have, you know, queen, jack of clubs, jack ten of clubs. Um, he's not gonna have ace, queen offsuit, ace, jack offsuit, although some people do not know they are supposed to three bet that, so they may still have that. I would definitely be slowing down here on the turn. I would definitely be slowing down here on the turn. Turn, I don't see a point in betting. I got a low flush and I don't need protection. I'll only get called with better, so I check. Phil checks behind. Yep. Other river, the king pairs. If I check again, he bets two thirds or partas, I'm in a really nasty spot. So I choose to block bet one-third to try to get value out of his king x and get the showdown as cheap as possible. I like it. Yep, completely fine. And he has. Jacks with the jack flops, definitely handy, suppose of three bet and get it in with pre-flop. He says he calls with the jack flops. Do I fail it time myself by betting the river? No, I think he's still gonna have quite some worse king x that can call. And we um basically lose a minimum against those hands, because if you check, we probably gonna have to call. Uh, because he could be turning some smaller pairs into a bluff like eights and stuff without a club. Um, so yeah, I think he played a nice, I think well played, but I would probably be falling pre. Um. That's what I would be doing. What do you guys think of the head? I think, I think I liked it. I think I liked it. So yeah, another really stacked session. Guys, 50 hands we did. Think a lot of interesting spots. I hope you guys found some failure in it. If you did, please, please, please be sure to like, be sure to subscribe as well. And um. Also be sure to post new hints down below for next week's study session, once again happening on Thursday at 7pm, 7pm, summer time. So looking forward to see you guys then. Thanks for watching. See you guys next time.